Welcome back to Enquiring into Workplace Drug Testing, Victoria. Joining us for this session is we got Matthew Davis from Med Relief Australia on Zoom. And also joining us in person is Matthew McCrone. For Government Relations Manager, sorry, as a government relations manager for Montu. Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your taking your time and making some mission and giving evidence today. I just want to quickly read some information regarding evidence you provided to us today before we continue. Just regarding the evidence, all evidence taken is protected by Parliament in privilege, as provided by the Constitution Act 1975 and further subject to the provision of the Leicester Council's standing orders. Therefore, the information you provide during this hearing is protected by law. You're protected against any action for what you say during this hearing, but you go elsewhere and repeat the same thing. Those comments may not be protected by this privilege. In the deliberate false evidence or misleading of the committee, maybe considered contempt of Parliament, all evidence is being recorded. You'll be provided proof version of the transcript following the hearing. The transcript will obviously be made public and posted on the committee website. Again, thank you for coming in. Could you please state your full name and organisation you're representing just for the record, please?
My name's Matthew McCrone and I'm here representing Montu.
Thank you, Matthew.
And I am Nathan Davis, representing Med Relief Australia. Sorry, I couldn't be there in person.
Thank you, Nathan. Quickly, I'll just quick introduce the committee to you. I'm Chul Lu, they're the chair, the chairman, Mr Ryan Bachelor, Mr Rachel Payne, Mr David Egashane, Dr Sarah Manson, and also Mansfield, sorry. And also Dr Rene Heath is on Zoom with us as well. I know you guys gentlemen have made submissions. Open up for an open statement before we can proceed to open the panel for questions. Matthew?
Go for it, Matt, in persons first.
Thank you. I probably would, I would like to start by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land on which we meet, the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin Nation. I pay respect to elders past, present and emerging. So my name is Matthew McCrone. I'm the Government Relations Manager for Montu, which is Australia's largest medicinal cannabis company, indeed the largest medicinal cannabis company outside of North America. I'm also government and industry lead for the newly formed industry association Cannabis Council Australia, of which Montu is a founding member. So I would like to start by thanking you for the invitation and time here today to contribute to this inquiry on behalf of the medicinal cannabis industry in Australia. My background is as a pharmacist with 23 years working in senior positions for both Australian and Victorian governments. I was a senior pharmacist at the Therapeutic Goods Administration, which is Australia's federal medicines regulator. I was the chief medicines regulator here in Victoria. I led the task force in Victoria to legalize medicinal cannabis back in 2015. And I also led the implementation of safe script here in Victoria. So I'm fortunate, I suppose, that I have worked across the health regulatory space and I understand where all the moving parts fit a little bit better than most. For the committee's information, Montu, which was established in 2019, has several areas in which it operates. We have our patient clinic, Orturna Leaf, which is an end-to-end online platform that connects patients with highly trained nurses and doctors. The clinic is trusted by more than 150,000 Australians, 20,000 of which are Victorians. Given that only about 5% of GPs across Australia are willing or able to prescribe medicinal cannabis to eligible patients, Montu also has developed Saged, which is an online training platform for clinicians. And we also have our distribution company, Lifio, which supplies pharmacies with more than 500 medicinal cannabis products across various ranges. So on to specific issues of this inquiry. Current workplace drug testing laws across the country test for presence of drugs, not impairment. Given the reason workplace drug testing frameworks exist is to ensure that workers in safety critical roles are not impaired in their job, testing for presence rather than impairment is not warranted. Said more straightforwardly, the zero tolerance laws are discriminatory, they're outdated, and they are unsupported by science. Tetrahydrocannabinol, or more commonly known as THC, which is the psychoactive component in cannabis, can stay in your system for weeks after use. Having THC in your system doesn't mean you're impaired. In fact, the psychoactive effects of THC can last for only a few hours. This means that someone who has been prescribed medicinal cannabis and is unimpaired by the medicine could be penalized or even lose their job and taking their medication days or even weeks prior to a workplace drug test. Workplace drug testing regimes therefore raise an important human rights issue because they potentially allow workers to be penalized who are not impaired while at work. For the most part, there isn't even a requirement to establish whether or not a worker was impaired by the drug or to establish the presence of the substance over a specific threshold, as is the case by comparison with blood alcohol concentrations. Medicinal cannabis is typically taken every day. There is research that has found that medicinal cannabis, and I'm quoting from Tom Arkel's research, which I'm guessing has come up often in this inquiry. Medicinal cannabis may have minimum acute impact on cognitive function when prescribed and used as directed. So these characteristics have led some to question whether workplace drug testing regimes are proportionate or justifiable. Legislation in this area should consider the unintended consequences of mandatory and universal workplace drug testing programs, including the positive drug tests that are not linked to impairment, as well as the possibility of inaccurate results. Montu's written submission to the inquiry outlines several points of consideration around this complex issue, including the appropriateness of universal application of workplace drug testing regimes, the need for legislation to protect workers' privacy, the need for more nuanced evidence-based testing frameworks, and how treating medicinal cannabis differently to other types of prescription medication promotes stigma and discrimination of those employees taking illegally prescribed medication. So in conclusion, while Montu supports the current legal requirements for workplace strategies to promote, to protect employees in safety critical roles, we are of the view that currently both the scope and sub, the scope of substances in workplace screening and the approach of testing for mere presence rather than impairment are discriminatory and need to be updated. This means potentially expanding scope of testing to other prescription medicines which impair cognition and developing separate tests which measure cognitive impairment. We have also put forward what a best practice workplace screening model would include with due process and natural justice at its core. So in conclusion, I would like to again thank the committee for bringing to attention this very important issue of how medicinal cannabis is dealt with in workplace drug testing arrangements. It is a significant issue for many of our patients and the committee's work here has a focus on the important principles of fairness and justice.
Thank you, Matthew. Nathan, you'd like to have an open statement before we open any questions?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairperson. Chairperson and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to address the workplace testing inquiry today. I'm here on behalf of Med Relief Australia to, a leading medical cannabis provider in Australia and New Zealand, to discuss critical issues concerning the treatment of cannabis patients and their need for fair and evidence-based policies. We are licensed by the Australian Office of Drug Control, part of the TGA, to cultivate, manufacture and distribute medical cannabis. Oh, sorry, there's a reverb. I'll turn my volume down. Our mission is to enhance the health of Australian patients guided by extensive research and development in pharmaceutical healthcare. Further to submission into this matter that we've provided, I'll focus on two key points. The critical role that doctors play in managing a medical cannabis patient treatment and the necessity to prevent discrimination against patients who use medical cannabis. Firstly, the role of doctors in managing medical cannabis treatment. Medical cannabis, like any prescribed medication, is administered under the careful supervision of a healthcare professional. Victoria was among the first of the states to endorse the legal use, as Matt mentioned, recognizing its potential benefits for patient care. This trust in medical professionals should extend to all aspects of policy, including driving and workplace drug testing. It's essential to understand the presence of THC in a patient's system does not equate to impairment. Research does show that low levels of THC, particularly in regular medical cannabis patients, does not correlate to an increased risk of accidents or workplace injury. These findings emphasize the importance of evaluating impairment-based scientific evidence rather than mere THC presence. Secondly, discrimination against medical cannabis patients. The current laws in Victoria can discriminate against patients who use medical cannabis. These laws often do not differentiate between a recreational user or a medically supervised patient. This results in unfair penalties for patients adhering to their prescribed treatments. Such discrimination is unjust and unsupported by scientific data. Evidence indicates that medical cannabis, when used under the doctor's guidance, is no less safe than any other medication being prescribed. Policies must provide that they ensure that they do not disproportionately impact medical cannabis patients, respecting their rights to their treatment. Doctors should also not be placed in a position that sees a patient return to using medication that is not as optimal of a treatment as medical cannabis is. But this is due to legislation, sadly. Just want to point out that Tasmania's model for medical cannabis in relation to driving is a good one. Tasmania provides valuable model by treating medical cannabis like other scheduled medications. The titration of doses managed by the healthcare professional and this approach ensures the patient's safety, fair treatment and upholds the natural justice, as Matt mentioned. Adopting a similar model in Victoria could provide consistency and fairness for medical cannabis patients, we believe. Particularly some findings from Canada in our experience with medical cannabis being legal there illustrate that the actual impact on cannabis on road safety, for instance, is minimal compared to alcohol or other impairing drugs, and we know these such as benzodiazepines and opiates. Policies should reflect this reality, ensuring fairness for medical cannabis patients. In conclusion, Med Relief Australia urges you and the committee to consider the critical role of doctors in managing medical cannabis treatment, of which there are more than 15,000 doctors prescribing medical cannabis in Australia currently. Victoria's pioneering stance on legalizing medical cannabis should extend to fair, evidence-based workplace drug testing policies. Thanks for your attention today and we're available for further discussion and other information if required.
Thank you, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Nathan, for your opening statement. I'll quickly ask a few questions then open up to the panel. Definitely appreciate your presentation and definitely the lesson to the medicinal cannabis, the health sector. I'm sure that benefits people, listen to the health issues and listen to their medications. But this is quite related, looking to the risks and the workplace testing. So I'll first go to you, Matt. You mentioned in your submission, Montu, actually before I do that, you mentioned about penalized. I just want to ask you, when you mentioned penalized and we had witness just prior to you mention about high-risk employment, does removing a person with positive from the task, not, not, not losing their job, just removing because they test positive, moving from that actually task to do it at the moment when it tests positive and then discussing, then discuss about lesson to how it occurs and stuff and try to seek their support for them, does that, under your definition, is that penalizing or not?
It is if they're not impaired because what the testing regimes currently look for is presence. Presence of a substance which can be in your body for weeks. So simply because you've got a substance presence in your body, it doesn't mean you're not capable of performing a task.
As well as want to clarify that, we used to be influenced. All right, just go on. You mentioned the Montu has produced over 500 products which help the health sector. And how many of those products has no THC or the range of products, those 500 products, has any products has no THC in it at all?
Well, I'd have to take that under advisement, but from previous lives lived when I was running the task force, CBD is an incredibly difficult substance to isolate. So even with highly, highly, highly concentrated CBD products, there still is trace THC in them, unless they're synthetic CBD, which is rare.
Are you telling me it can't be done or it's very hardly cost effect, very costly?
It's very costly. It would probably be synthetic rather than plant-derived. And I think that misses a more germane issue is CBD isn't the only cannabinoid that actually has therapeutic effect. And moreover, it is not just the cannabinoids, it is the presence of terpenes as well. You know, and the collective, what they call entourage effect of all of those, all of those substances at once. So, but to, to say that we'll just take the THC out of all the products and we're fine, it kind of misses the point of the therapeutic nature of medicinal cannabis.
So all the testing, are they testing for tests? So you're testing for all the other stuff as well? When you say that we do testing, does it record THC or to record all the other substances mentioned?
Testing tests for THC is a surrogate of presence of cannabis.
Okay, so my question again, if you could take a notice, how many of those products, final products has no THC from Montu, if you can take them on notice?
I will, but I would say to you tentatively that it would be zero. It would have absolutely zero because another point to raise is THC itself is there. Yeah, sorry, Nathan, you go.
I might be able to, I might be able to assist there. There is some information provided by the TGA in relation to the categories that are prescribed for doctors and this relates to the amount of THC that is in those compounds. Now ultimately, there's probably close to 98% of the products available on the Australian market do contain traces of THC. Now, some of these amounts of THC are almost undetectable, as Matt was saying. However, we almost have to label them on the product because it's almost like a may contain a trace of nuts. But this is where we're in relation to that. There are products that are CBD isolate, but they are very few. And when we look at THC and CBD, they are very different compounds in what they are doing in relation to their effect on the patient.
Thank you. Leads by the next question because I just want to get perspective because the two major, I mean large company producing medicinal cannabis. I was just wanting just the perspective of what you're producing and what you're providing service for, the health sector.
98% of Med Relief Australia's products contain some trace elements of THC and that can, those forms of products can be orally administered like a soft gel. They can be inhalation via an inhalation route. So it depends on the treatment that the patient's under. Now, the patient is also under management of a care of a doctor through these processes. I just want to highlight just two things. The majority of prescriptions being prescribed for in Australia relate to three major patient health outcomes. Pain, sleep and mental health. Now, when we consider that as the subset of your workforce, there's a lot of patients that are already being treated via these medications already. I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. Now, my last question is to, which leads us, have you done a lot of research? And you see, Nathan, you mentioned research in THC shows very low level of impairment. When you say low level of THC shows impairment, what's the low level from your research that you refer to?
Yeah, there's two, there's, I think, and I will take this on notice for clarification if required, but I believe Canada is under point two of a nanogram in the blood and the USA is under five. Now, in relation to how you test that on any roadside workplace or anything is another question. So there is those. There is also some findings by the RACGP in relation to this. They published some information in a journal back in 2018, which can be provided post this if needed.
Thank you. But Chair, if I can add to that, I mean, it's, it's almost an accident of history that alcohol was the first thing that we developed testing for because alcohol has a very specific linear correlation between its blood concentration and its impairment effect. Very few other substances have such a linear correlation. So to even look at, well, let's look at what a blood level might be, that's a reasonable blood level that probably isn't impairment. There isn't a linear correlation like there is with alcohol.
Just last question I'll pass on to my deputy.
Again, it is a presence.
Yep.
That's, that's correct. It is a presence only.
Okay. Beginning, disregard lesson to how long the, where tests is on your, on your person, how long it's been there. With THC, from your position or from understanding, does it cause impairment from your research or from your understanding? Does THC cause impairment or not?
Nathan, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I was going to say, in relation to the doctors that are prescribing it, the response that we get and what we see and through the findings that we've provided, medical cannabis under the treatment of a doctor is no less safe than any other prescribed medication. No, we do not.
I would say you can't make a general statement like that. So in general, patients who are prescribed medicinal cannabis are taking it chronically. They're taking it every day and the, the way the body actually processes cannabis when it's taken chronically is very different to a patient who's taking it for the first time, who is naive. So it depends on so many circumstances, but at the very least, I would say that if there is impairment, impairment would only be for the first few hours after a dose.
Thank you. It seems like maybe a broad question, but it's kind of helpful, be fundamental for the inquiry. Do you understand even the prevalence of medicinal cannabis use in Victoria?
Well, Montu has 20,000 patients, so we definitely can tell you that.
Yep.
Broader than that, outside of our own patient numbers.
Even from a peak, you mentioned you were, started at peak.
Yeah, we've really only got our own numbers. Maybe Nathan can add to our numbers.
The TGA has some special access data that can be provided in relation to that. Currently, Victoria is the fastest growing state in relation to the uptake by prescribers that we see. Patients have been accessing it obviously from the very, very start in 2017. We do see thousands of patients being dispensed medical cannabis by pharmacies around the, around the state. Those numbers can be provided, but they are in the thousands.
Okay, anything that would help us sort of ground the scale and rate of growth would be useful for the report.
Sure, we'll take that on notice. I mean, but Nathan's right, the dashboard that the TGA has is updated, I think, monthly.
Okay, that'll be, that will be.
I can, I can share a link back to the Organisation Committee in relation to that SAS dashboard. If Matt can't do that there in person, no worries.
Then my next question was going to go to the question about what medical advice is generally given on the likelihood or the length of likely impairment following ingestion of medical medicinal cannabis products. You mentioned that you probably can't make a general, doctors can't make a general statement. As a supplier, what advice do you give doctors?
Well, we don't. The medical practitioner is the one that actually has the, you know.
So you don't, do you give any guidance to prescribers about different products? Strengths?
So if I could answer it this way.
Yeah.
THC is the one, is the cannabinoid that has, that can have psychoactive effect. You know, and people are moving away from cognitive impairment and referring to it more about psychoactive effect. So certainly the higher the THC component, the higher the likelihood of the initial psychoactive effect. Beyond that, I mean, impairment is such a nebulous term. Besides the fact that it's not even measured for impairment in workplace drug testing.
We have had the sort of analogy.
So I would say.
Are there some medications where, you know, warnings are given about the length of time that people shouldn't drive or use heavy machinery following consumption? Do you have a similar constructive warning that you provide at a product level?
We don't for products. It's, I don't think it would be appropriate for supplying products to actually be advising medical practitioners. But what I will, but what I will say is medical practitioners universally advise their patients about cognitive impairment, whether they're increasing their dose of methadone, whether they're being prescribed an antipsychotic for the first time. You know, it's, it's, it's grist for the mill for a medical practitioner to be advising a patient about the possibility of cognitive impairment with a prescription medicine there. And also the pharmacist, I mean, hey, I'll call one for the team. Pharmacists are very, very able to be counselling patients on side effects generally, but specifically about impairment. And generally, you know, I haven't worked in clinical practice for a very long time, but you would say to a patient, you just need to see where you are, you need to see how you go and be careful. Advice beyond that, more specific advice, it really depends on so many factors, you can't, you can't generalize.
And that's what's in the training you provide?
As to what's in the Saged portal, again, I'd have to take that under advisement, but that's, that portal is actually written by clinicians, for clinicians. So we can look at the specific advice there about.
Nathan, you want to ask, answer that question? If I'm the big chair too, please.
Yeah, just in relation to the question around what doctors are providing. Unfortunately, doctors are at a crossroads where they legally have to provide the update to the patient that I'm letting you know that you're now taking a medical cannabis patient, it's recorded on my system there. They're doing that for protection purely for the fact that they're disclosing to the, to the patient that today's laws haven't yet caught up with where the science is. So when we consider, I just want to talk about what gets provided to the patient when they're picking up their prescription. It's no dissimilar to any other medication and it's labelled appropriately by the pharmacist. If you're getting your benzodiazepam, which is your Valium and you're taking it for your sleep, it's getting labelled with an L1 label. Now, that L1 label says, you know, it may infect drowsiness, do not, do not take. Now, that's there as a blanket statement. Now, we're still finding out that patients being safely titrated and doctors are reporting back to us in, in, in large numbers, that the patient's actually better and safely titrated under their care than if they're on their previous medication or not taking their medication at all. So the doctors are informing their patient that the laws of today haven't yet caught up.
Sorry, just to, just want to pick you up on that, that it's not a question about whether the law's caught up. It's a question about whether there is any medical advice about likelihood of impairment. They're two very separate questions.
So the doctor goes through their usual healthcare practices of optimal minimal dose and their quality use of medicines in relation to prescribing cannabis or any other medication. So I'd have to refer that, no, they have every discussion with their patient around this treatment and what it may mean for them.
I do want to actually, so Nathan made reference to label one, which is definitely pharmacist's swim lane. That is actually for drowsiness, which is different to cognitive impairment. I mean, they can intersect, but they're not synonymous. In a previous life, when I worked at TGA, there was an ongoing battle with manufacturers just saying label one needs to be applied to our medicine purely from a risk management point of view. That they could say that if the patient's taking the medicine and we had a warning that it may cause drowsiness and then they wrap their car around the tree, we have no liability because we've actually warned them of drowsiness. So there is a real disconnect between advice on prescription medicines broadly around whether they cause cognitive impairment and whether that, that is actually established by research. So the challenge has ever been thus and it's not just specific to medicinal cannabis.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to Nathan and Matthew for appearing before us today. What has come up quite a lot throughout this inquiry is that drug testing is there because then there's not a real understanding as to whether patients are actually consuming their medicinal cannabis appropriately. And so I guess I wanted to question, as both of you as providers and working closely with doctors that are prescribing doctors, is there any concern that patients are using their medication not as desired or inappropriately? Is this something that has been flagged within?
In terms, well, in terms of that, the patient is regularly screened with their doctor. And they're not given a large, you know, or see you in six or eight months. They're managed on a regular basis with their patient. They're given proper, appropriate intervals when they're managing that. And the titration period within that, because you've got to find, everyone's endocannabinoid system is different. And this is the difference that we have to understand is we're all fighting that titration level. So the doctor's in regular control of that and no dissimilar to any other medication that you could be taking more or less of. Now, it's managed appropriately, I don't think. You, you could be taking more or less of. Now, it's managed appropriately. I don't think we're seeing any different stigma related to. Cannabis or, or another patient or not.
It, it seems as though, just from um what you're sort of reporting, that, you know, the treating doctor treats each patient on a case by case basis. And that may even be, um, you know, a, a more of a risk adverse approach to if it was a, a different type of medication. So whether that be on, based on what they're prescribed, their modes of consumption, rates of consumption, all of that information that would be provided. By that doctor to a patient.
And there is follow up, you know, patients aren't just seen by a doctor and that's, good guy have a good life. So as to when they're coming back for repeat prescriptions, that would be an indicator of whether or not the patient's actually taken. The medication beyond the prescribed dosage range, and there would be a conversation around that if there was.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great. Um, and I guess just in reference to, you sort of mentioned uh Canada and some of the examples that have happened there. And looking at best practice um to ensure sort of that due process and natural justice. Do you think that um there has been a resistance of uh the idea of medicinal cannabis being legally, legally prescribed? As a medication in Australia, in comparison to what you've seen in other jurisdictions or?
I would say. Australia right now, Australia right now is the largest, largest jurisdiction for medical cannabis outside North America. I'm very, very clear about this. We have one of the largest and we have one of the most robust systems for medical cannabis in the world. We are a beacon. The TGA and our state health departments need to be commended for what they've done. Um, in relation to um patient outcome and access. Uh, yes, there is a massive uptake in relation to doctors exploring this as a treatment alternative to others that have been unsuccessful.
Mine's probably a little bit different to Nathan's, um, and I refer back to the um Victorian Law Reform Commission's report. That um Special Commissioner Ian Freckleton wrote. And the intention of that, which was where the recommendations came from, that built the framework, the legal framework for medicinal cannabis in Victoria was. That it was always intended, that it was going to be embedded into normal general practice. That, you know, you could go to your GP, get a repeat for your blood pressure tablet and get a repeat for your medicinal cannabis medication while you're there. That unfortunately is not what's um unfolded in, in, in lived experience. There is um reticence still in general practice for it to be um for general, for GPs to prescribe. So we have, we don't have a lot of GPs prescribing. Um, key organisations like the RACGP and the AMA are kind of turning around a little bit on their position. On, on their views on medicinal cannabis. So all of that adds to the stigma and the complication that, that medicinal cannabis patients suffer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for appearing today. I was interested in your um proposition around broadening. Workplace testing potentially and I, look, I, I, I think it highlights, I guess, a bigger point around. A lot of the other medications that we don't screen for and our different treatment of them, um, and they are at least as if not much more impairing.
Indeed.
Medicinal cannabis would be. On a, I, I guess I'd just be interested in exploring whether, you know. What, what that might look like if we were to expand testing and whether that's, you know, even just from a technical point of view, possible. What would be the practical implications of, of that?
Okay, well, not being a pathology scientist, I can't say exactly, but certainly standards can be developed for, to screen for anything. Oxycodone was added to the standard not that long ago, um, so standards can be added. As to um what needs to be added, and I did refer to this in our written submission. So rather than manufacturers, look to clinicians and clinical experts. So the Victorian Department of Health commissioned a report from Austin Health on all prescription medicines which cause harm, including cognitive impairment. And I think that's the most exhaustive list out there as to po- potential prescription medicines which can cause impairment. And the list, it's, these aren't fringe medicines, you know, um gabapentinoids. Um, they're prescribed for chronic pain really, really broadly. Z class drugs, Zopaklon and Zolpidem for insomnia, and they cause daytime sedation. And that's probably the number one treatment for insomnia, you know, other than medicinal cannabis. Um, antipsychotics, um, anti-inflammatories, first generation antihistamines, which you don't even need a script for. You can just buy them from the pharmacy. So the idea that this list that exists in the Australian standard. Of substances are the only substances that can potentially cause risk at work is, is not based on fact.
Um, and you, so I, I guess in terms of what a workplace drug testing. Or, you know, AOD sort of approach might look like. Other than broadening that list to include all of the potential medications that, and substances that might cause impairment. What, like, do you have another approach that you suggest?
So we certainly listed what best practice looked like, um, and I, I mean, I can read from notes here and go through that. But it's mostly based on the NCETA review that they did in twenty eleven about best practice workplace drug testing programs. Um, it's all about natural justice, about um not implementing testing until at least six weeks after. Uh, a drug program has been, you know, education program has been um done through the workplace. Um, I, I could go on, but I think the important thing is. There are lots of substances out there that are prescribed by doctors which can cause impairment, other than the ones that are already being tested for. So from a natural justice point of view, yes, it does need to be looked at to expand that. But what that points to is the need for a reliable test for impairment becomes greater than ever. And the Druid test was referred to, and that is the test that Akel Etal used in their published um, um, open label. Um, uh, trial for those patients taking medicinal cannabis, so used a driving simulator. And indeed, it's the same research team that will be uh doing the um closed road trial. Um, that was announced by the Premier earlier this week. So, you know, there are impairment tests and they're being used already. So it's not that the technology or the idea of it doesn't exist.
Um, and so why do you, you know, why do you think we don't use that test, in a test for impairment?
As a prior regulator, I would say sometimes regulations don't move quickly enough. And I think that's all that's the case here.
David?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Um, I, I, I've also got a curiosity that I share with Mr. Bachelor. We, we've got all these massive numbers for scripts, um, and, and we've never been able to translate that into persons. I'm, I'm wondering maybe if we could just start with, with you, Nathan. In, in terms of med relief, I mean, roughly how many patients would you have here in Victoria, you reckon?
That's very difficult to answer that specifically as well because we're obviously, we, we don't get that data of what's actually been dispensed. That's a very hard, hard thing. We do see some of those, um, those information. In, in, in relation to the number of patients, are, are you, are you wanting to know the size of your actual market that you, that, that are patients using? Or how many patients might be using a product? Because there could be a patient that's using one product once a month when they're having their anxiety. But they've got THC in their system. Or it could be that patient who's dealing with their chronic pain, who's using an oral dose in the morning. And an inhalation dose at night, and they're using two products.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So those numbers that you're actually seeing are probably more closely related to the, the Victorian Health Department. I, I don't have access to those specifically in relation to how many patients.
Well, what I would say is unfortunately the TGA numbers aren't unique patients necessarily.
Exactly.
It's instances of approval. Um, and with authorised prescriber, that's even more murky because. I'm sure you know, once a prescriber becomes authorised as an authorised prescriber under TGA framework, that's it. They report six monthly, but. Um, so our numbers are accurate because it is our clinic. So when we say twenty thousand Victorians, um, that is patients, active patients within the last six months.
So, well, is there a way we can get some understanding in terms of um being able to get, uh, yeah, I mean, you've got obviously a huge sample there. Um, do you know what the average number of scripts per patient is?
Uh, we'd have to come back to you on that.
Can I, can I give that to both of you? In terms, I, I think the committee would be deeply appreciative of both, how many, you know, what data is out there? Given the TGA can't tell us this, what data is out there in terms of the total number of people on MedCAN? And, and, and if you could, um, what's the average number of scripts per patient?
Yep.
That would be really useful information. Um. Thank you both for your, for your really interesting contribution. I, I guess we're, we're hearing from lots and lots of witnesses about, about the um. Uh, need for consistency of treatment. And I, I, I think from what you've already said, clearly, you don't feel that that's the case. You, you, you also talk about in your submission, um, coming up with the drug screening for all types of medication. I guess there's two questions in my mind out of that. Uh, one, is, is that actually practicable? And two, if there's not a direct correlation between presence and impairment, is it worth it?
So, um, again, um, in previous life as a regulator, sometimes uh you kind of have to step slowly. Rather than radically, um, to keep things, to keep everyone comfortable. So certainly, we would say in the first instance, yes, there would need to be more um broader. Um, testing of, of uh presence for any prescription medicine that can cause impairment. But then if that presence is, comes up positive, then then an impairment test would need to be done. Um, but, you know, moving forward, there could be a, a future perfect world where it's, it's just about testing for impairment. You know, cognitively of, of the, of the worker, rather than actually caring about whether there's substances in their system or not.
Okay. So if you were testing for, if, if, like, if we take that as the holy grail, is to actually have a grade impairment test. Is there a potential role then for still there being some sort of presence testing as well?
Again, I say, in a future perfect world, no, but a lot of people would have to come a long way to be comfortable with that.
So it might be a, a bit of a safety net that I just might feel comfortable with if there was both.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's right.
Nathan, did you want to add anything to it? Okay, all right.
Nothing specifically.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Dave. Um, Renee, Dr. Heath, you got any questions before we wrap this up?
Um, no, thank you. So actually, maybe I do have one. I think it was Nathan may have said that it doesn't cause cognitive impairment. But also then I, I'm hearing that it's used as a treatment for insomnia. So that to me would say that it would at least put you to sleep. So how do you balance these two?
Well, again, it depends where, where the patient and the doctor is yourself. You're on an optimal minimal dose of that treatment. So a patient who's starting a, 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 a patient out would generally start on a CBD dominant formula with little THC. And then manage that patient up either to a balanced or another appropriate medication. So I guess in terms of i- i- the statement, the patient's being managed under their care of their doctor. Whether the, the impairment piece needs to go back to the psychoactive discussion that Matt alluded to. Because that, that psychoactive compound that is actually assisting that patient to sleep. May not be causing them any impairment regardless of the dose of that THC.
All right. Uh, thank you so much. I, just in the interest of time, any other questions I'll provide on that just, thank you.
No worries, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heath. Um, Chairman, thank you so much for coming in and giving submission. And a few question on notice for, I think, both of you. Um, Nathan, thank you much for giving submission. Definitely, if I should provide, I'll definitely take into consideration when we move forward, recommendation as well. Thank you.
Chair, thank you, committee.
Thank you.
Could I ask the.
Thank you.
Answer to this topic called.